Good evening, and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board Meeting of December 18th, 2023. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucchus, and I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Josh Levine.
Yes.
Veneeth Amadvi?
Here.
Amadvi. Is that it? Amadvi?
Amadvi.
Amadvi. Okay. Mark Gold.
Here.
And Dan Swerko.
Here.
And staff, when I called your name, please respond with the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbier.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinars posted on the agenda, and the town's website identifies how the public may join. There's no chat or QA function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. You may join the webinar by phone by dialing star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Looks like we're ready to go. So we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. When we all stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with some announcements. Believe it or not, we are looking for citizen petition articles for the annual town meeting of 2024, and that meeting is going to be on May 14th, and the petitions are due no later than 4:30 on Monday, January 29th, 2023.
Should be 2024, sorry.
Pardon?
Should be 2024, sorry.
Oh, should be 2024, that's right. Okay. Thanks for catching that. In order for a petition to be granted, placement on the town annual meeting warrant, ten names, signatures, addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified to the town clerk. Forms and instructions are available on the town's website, www-longmeadowma.gov. On the Select Board page, you'll find them. Petition articles will be printed in the warrant verbatim, so citizens are asked to review the forms and instructions carefully. And we, you know, we need to get it in January so we can make sure that it will run smoothly when it comes time to put it on the warrant. Municipal offices for the town of Long Meadow will be closed on Monday, December 25th, and for Christmas Day, and on Monday, January 1st, 2024, for New Year's Day. And we wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. We have a lot of folks who work for this town that we're glad they're having the day off to relax and be with their families. Next is resident comments. If there's anyone in attendance or in Zoom that would like to make a comment at this point? No? Okay. So we'll move on to, we have an audit report presentation. Markham LLP, Certified Public Accountants, licensed in Massachusetts, have audited the town's financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. And we have representatives from Markham?
They're online.
Are they online? Okay. And if you'll just please report your findings of your assessment.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Candy Campell, and I'm a partner at Markham. I apologize for not being there in person tonight, but we have the blue bug going through our house right now, so I'm really trying to limit my exposure to everyone else. So I apologize for not able to be there in person tonight. For those of you who were at my presentation in January for last year's audit, if you recall, the firm we were, I was formerly with Melanson, merged with Markham effective 1-1, 2023. And I am a partner at the firm, and I am responsible for overseeing the town's audit. And I'm here tonight to discuss the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit. As the chairboards and you're aware, last week I met with the Audit Committee and the current finance director, as well as the former finance director for the town, and discussed the three reports that you provided in great detail: the annual comprehensive financial report, the management letter, and also the single audit report. As part of our meeting, we talked about the audit process and as well as the roles and responsibilities of everyone in that meeting, in the audit process, and that's what I'd like to briefly start with tonight. Now, in terms of our role as Markham, as your independent auditor, we are ultimately responsible for expressing an opinion on the town's financial statements. Management of the town is responsible for the financial statements, but we are responsible for evaluating them and expressing an opinion on them. In this fiscal year 2023, we issued the town an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which means that based on the results of our testing, we found that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. Now, as auditors, we're also responsible for planning and performing our audits to provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So, as I've said in the past, you know, we don't come in and look through every single invoice, we don't verify every single receipt. That's not what an audit is designed to do. We would never leave town hall. You would never be able to get rid of us. Instead, you know, we look at the various risks of the town, and we use the concept known as materiality to drive our testing. So we look at material balances, material activities, and perform testing on those as part of the audit process. Now, in terms of your role and responsibility for the audit process as a select board and as well as the town manager, because you are the governing body of the town, you're responsible for oversight of the entire audit process, which is why we have this meeting every year to discuss the results of the audit. Now, just so you guys are aware, if there was any material issue or concern that came to our attention or arose during the audit, we would bring that to you prior to this meeting. So we wouldn't just be, you know, come to this meeting and surprising you with a major issue. So as you can imagine, at this point, there's no material issues or concerns that we noted as a result of our audit testing. So that is good, too. Does anyone have any questions so far?
Well, was this report submitted to our audit committee that we have in the town?
Yes, I met with them last week.
Okay.
We had a meeting last Wednesday night and discussed the financial statements, as well as the management letter and the single audit report. We reviewed all three reports.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right.
Okay. So I wasn't going to do a really deep dive into the financial statements. They're, you know, over 100 pages, so no one has time to go through all of those in detail, but I just wanted to touch on some of the key numbers from the fiscal year 2023 audit. At the end of 2023, the town had a balance of approximately $8.2 million in its general stabilization fund. That balance increased just over $1 million from the prior year. The balance itself is very healthy, as it represents over 10 and 1/2% of the town's annual operating budget. And I know the town has made a concerted effort over the years to put money into the stabilization fund to help it grow. You know, as everyone is aware, you know, the economy's pretty uncertain right now, so it's good to have healthy reserves set aside just in case something is needed in the future. For fiscal year 23, the town had a certified free cash amount of approximately $2.8 million in its general fund. The Mass. Department of Revenue recommends that the free cash balance fall somewhere between 3% and 5% of the annual operating budget, and the town's free cash balance represents about 3.7% of its annual operating budget. So it's right within the, you know, the recommended range there, which is also very good. Now, in terms of some of the key liabilities that we kind of touch on and talk about every year, the big numbers in the financial statements, the town's net pension liability, which is your share of the Haddon County Retirement System's unfunded liability, was just over $50 million at the end of fiscal year 2023. That liability actually increased about $12 million from the prior year. That's a big increase. You know, typically, the liability does increase and decrease a little bit each year, but if you recall, the calendar year 2022 market was not great. So the system itself operates on a calendar year basis, and the numbers that it reported in your financial statements are calendar year 2022. So during the course of that year, the system itself lost about $63 million, which means that overall, the unfunded liability went up, and therefore, the town's share of that liability increased dramatically as well. That's not unusual. It's pretty consistent across the board in terms of what we saw with systems, because a lot of their assets are invested in the market. And even though they're somewhat conservative investments, they still lost money in calendar year 22. Now, that should hopefully go somewhat in the other direction in calendar year 2023. It hasn't been that bad of a year, but that's the main reason for the large increase in your pension liability last year. Now, on the other hand, the town's net OPAD liability, which is your other post employment benefit liability, and which is the, you know, town's share of the retiree health insurance cost, was just over $26 million at the end of fiscal year 23. That liability stayed about the same. It increased slightly, but no major changes from the prior year. The town does have an OPAD trust fund and has made a concerted effort to put money into that fund as well as the stabilization fund over the past few years. So that balance was approximately $6.6 million at the end of fiscal year 23. Now, unlike the net pension liability, the town's not required to fund the OPAD liability, but like I said, the town has established the OPAD trust fund, which is looked favorably upon by, you know, the bond rating agencies, and the town, like I said, has put substantial sums of money into it over the past few years. So that is, that is good, and the town should continue to do that. Because, you know, at this point, most cities and towns have established an OPAD trust fund and are funding it, you know, not to the level that the actual evaluation, you know, report says you should, but, but most are, most cities and towns are putting aside money into that trust fund every year. So. Does anyone have any questions on those things? Now, I just, I wasn't going to talk about the, talk in detail about the issues in the town's management letter, but there was no major issues that we reported to the town. There are some, you know, recommendations for improvements and things along that nature. We also audited the town's ARPA funds in fiscal year 23, and there was no issues or findings as a result of our testing of that either.
Oh, yes.
Tanya, if, this is Mark Gold. If I could ask you a question. It's about your management letter recommendations. I know that yearly you folks come in here and you do, I don't know the accounting term, but you do selective reviews of different departments. You don't do every receipt in every department. And so my question is, a couple of these departments that you identified, we have new management there, new leaders there. And I'm just wondering, is this the, for example, is this the first time in a while that we've, we've audited closely the assessor's office to come up with these recommendations, or is this the result of a change that you've noticed in the process of procedures?
Yeah. So that comment is actually a partial repeat of a comment from the prior year. We modified it slightly, and they did make some improvements. So during last year's audit, we did look at the assessor's department and the DPW department, but specifically the assessors, because there were some changes in personnel, and we wanted, it's a good time to get in there and talk to them about what their processes are. So part of the reason for the, that increase or that repeat from year to year is due to the timing of when the new person in the assessor's office started and the time we issued the audit and able to, you know, kind of follow up on it this year. So my understanding is they, you know, actions have already been taken to address those issues in that department, and it shouldn't be an issue for next fiscal year. But the reason it crossed over two fiscal years is due to just timing, them having to get up to speed with so many other things in that department and not being able to address the couple of suggestions we had there. So.
Okay, thank you. And the other one that struck me was the ambulance write-off policy, because I, I thought we had been, I'd been led to believe, right or wrong, that, that we were in a better shape in terms of collection and didn't realize that we had 675,000, that's over 120 days past due, because our, you know, we're dealing with insurance companies and other people, and our fire chief has consistently told us, oh, most of it we eventually collect. Is that, you know, how does that square with what your recommendations are?
We actually, we had a lengthy discussion about this in the audit naming last week. And, you know, the town in, a few years ago, you know, had done a process where they review everything and kind of, and write things off, you know, whether it's over a year old, over whatever time period they suggest. But that hasn't occurred in the past couple of years, and to be honest, we've seen that in a couple other towns as well. It's kind of fallen behind. I don't know if it was due to, you know, COVID and everything else that was going on, but, you know, that process of annually reviewing the balances and writing off anything over, you know, a year old, for instance, you know, should occur on an annual basis. The number I have in there, over 120 days, you know, that's not all necessarily uncollectible. But when we were looking at the Asian report, those were kind of the numbers we were given. And, you know, the, working with the insurance companies obviously does take time. There are contractual adjustments that are made based on, you know, what the services were provided and what Medicare says they're going to pay and things like that. And those adjustments are being made, you know, on a monthly basis. It's just, everything's a little bit slower than normal in the healthcare world and insurance world. So, you know, from our perspective, looking at that number, it's in your general ledger, it's deferred. So there's really no, we're not, the town hasn't like recognized revenue or recognized that number. It is sitting there, but it's really overstated. Now, whether it's overstated by the 675,000 or whatever it is that I have noted in it, it's over 125 days, maybe not, but there's just, that uncollect, that balance over 120 has been growing dramatically over the past couple of years, just because there hasn't been a formal write-off process. So my understanding is that, you know, the chief is going to take a deep look at that this year and do some bigger write-offs, if that is what they deem necessary.
But if I read correctly, what you're saying is, they are on our balance sheet as an asset, as a deferred, you know, as money owed to us, and in fact, they may not be collectible. So, you know, I mean, you know, whether it's 936,000 or 600, I mean, this is a six-figure thing that would, you know, amount that would significantly change our balance sheet. I mean, it's, it's not insignificant.
True, but when the town's evaluating, like what money is in or was received from ambulance, that number, it's an asset, but it's also a liability. So it has no net impact on your bottom line at this point in time. So whatever's been collected, you know, as cash, is recorded as revenue. So, you know, I don't think the town necessarily looks at that fund and said, oh, I have $900,000 in receivables I'm going to collect and counting on those for its operations, but at least that's not my understanding. So, you know, when the town's looking at what's in that fund, they're looking at the bottom line, what, you know, what's been collected, what's been expensed.
Maybe this is a question I have for Ian, but, but until we collect it, this isn't revenue. So it doesn't show up
Right.
on our balance sheet, correct, until we, until we actually collect these funds. So it's, you know, when we look at the end of the year and say, our ambulance revenue was X dollars, that does not include any of these deferred or receivables. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Your revenue is only what you collect, what you collected. So.
Now, the other thing is, insurance companies vary in the amount of time that they will allow you to submit. And I know, like Medicare, you can be a year, that's not a big deal, but other private insurance companies have a 90-day window, and some of those are starting to shrink that window, where it was 120, gone down to 190, it might go lower than that. So in terms of the way we're billing, did you have any recommendations on that? Because I imagine it's all computerized in terms of the submission, right?
Right. No, I don't, we didn't have any issues with that. It was just, there was no, you know, no formal write-offs done each year. And that, it's not uncommon to write off a fairly substantial portion of receivables each year for ambulance. I mean, it's up to the town what they want to do in terms of pursuing further collections or, you know, things along that nature, but, which is why the town, you know, should have a policy on, you know, what they want to pursue for collections, whether it's over a year or not, or how many times they want to submit to the insurance company, things like that. So.
Yeah.
There are a few other options.
Yeah, well, I know there's, you know, contractual amounts that they will pay, and anything over that, they won't pay. Is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about individuals who might have that liability because their insurance company doesn't cover it?
It's all of the above.
It's a little bit of everything, yeah.
Little bit of everything.
Yeah. But, you know, the contractual amounts usually get written off on a monthly basis by your outside billing company. They'll say, okay, you bill them $1,000 for this, Medicare's only going to cover 700, we're going to write that $300 off. So like, those things happen, you know, on a month-to-month basis, but anything that gets denied or any resident that doesn't pay, you know, those kind of things, that outstanding balance stays, and then the town needs to decide what they want to do with that.
Yeah. So for residents watching, I mean, when you choose insurance companies and you see different prices, and some are less expensive than others, the ones that are less expensive pay less to vendors, like the people who drive the ambulance, and so that's where that money, it's a write-off, but it is, it's just a part of doing business. There's no way to avoid that, really.
Yeah.
Tom, if I could, I just have one more question. And Tanya, I don't know if it's for you as much as it is for Ian, because the thing that really jumps out is the contract that you audited that showed that the billed, it says the billed unit cost was different from the contractual unit cost. I'm going to go out on a limb and say we were probably being billed at a higher cost, even though it doesn't say that, than our, than our contract was for. And so that's particularly problematic. And I guess the question is, and clearly, this, I don't, this just came out recently, but I assume there's going to be a pretty substantial response from the town, because this is a, this is a situation where it's not procedural. It's frankly, somebody out there billing us for more than we agreed to pay, and I presume, based on the fact that it was caught, we paid the higher amount, which we shouldn't.
Right now, purchasing and DPW are reviewing what specifically was charged in terms of the invoice versus what work was done, and no amounts have been paid as soon as this was caught. So going forward, right now, we're in contractual obligations with the vendor.
How far back, though, are we going based on what they, I mean, it's fine to say from here on forward, but are we going back a full year?
I'd have to ask Sean and Chad, but right now, they're working with the vendor.
I'd like to encourage that we do that, based on what, I mean, this is why, this is exactly why you have it on.
They are both aware of, you know, things like this that can happen, and because this was caught, I'm glad that it was caught, because, you know, it's something that, you know, Chad, Chad does a very good job about tracking purchasing and making sure all departments send him the invoices, make sure we have the correct procurement rules being applied. So this is something that is a very few and far between issue.
I understand that. Mike, from an outsider looking in, and I'm a resident looking in, I would say, and I know I'm not in charge, so I don't get to say it, but I would say, these guys are disqualified from further bids because they're not abiding by the contract. We contracted for them at X dollars an hour, and they're charging us at Y dollars an hour. And again, I'm making the assumption Y is higher than X. And to me, that's just unconscionable. They signed a contract and, you know, they may be, even if they're the only guys in town, we go find somebody out of town. It's my, that's my take on it. This is, this is really, this is why we have audits, but this is terrible, in my opinion. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but.
Well, thank you for your comments.
I think we just need to learn more, see what's going on before making some kind of judgment.
Yeah, maybe we could come up with some sort of a standard procedure regarding, you know, charges and payments and.
Well, the question is process, Tom. If I write a contract to vendor X, when the bill comes in from vendor X, since I wrote the contract or I authorized it, I ought to approve that contract and say, you know, vendor X agreed to work for $30 an hour, and here they're billing me at $33 an hour, and I'm not going to pay it. But I don't know the process that we have, but clearly, it sounds like, you know, our auditors found out that we're getting these invoices for a different amount, and because the invoices come in through a different process, they were likely getting paid. Maybe our audit committee has looked into, I hope they've all looked into this as well, so maybe.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Shone. I'm the current chair of the Audit Committee, and I'm happy to offer our opinion on how this all went. Tanya, I don't know if you wanted to finish your presentation first, or if you want to jump directly to this issue, but just to address the comments from Mr. Gold, it was my understanding last week from our conversation and review of that, that this had been considered by both the town and the contractor to be an error, as opposed to sort of a dishonest interaction. Am I correct in that?
That is what the town said, I believe. You know, we were looking at, I think the invoices we looked at occurred between March and June, because we're auditing fiscal year 2023. So I don't know what has happened since June 30th, 2023. We didn't look at anything beyond that. You know, we brought this to the town's attention. They, like I said, immediately stopped payment of any of the invoices, you know, to the vendor and have been working with them to reconcile that. You know, the dollar amount from an audit perspective was not material, so therefore, you know, we didn't raise to a significant issue, but clearly, you know, the town addressed it immediately when it was brought to their attention. So that is good. You know, just wanted to point out, you know, like you had mentioned, Mark, that entire year, we've looked at different departments and done some kind of detailed, a deep dive in testing. And last year, we looked at a variety of the town's contracts and looked at the contract amounts and traced them to invoices. I don't know specifically off the top of my head if this was one of the vendors that we did test, but we didn't find any issues in the 25 that we tested last year. And we do test procurement every year. We slice a sample of invoices, you know, we've never had issues with that. So this was the first time that something like that has been brought to our attention. I do know there's a bunch of different rates on the invoices for this type of vendor in terms of what they're, what they're providing, and in some instances, they were consolidating rates together. So I think there was some additional analysis that needed to get done by the town in terms of what the differences were. But what we were seeing was that the invoice amount was higher than the bid amount. But that's up to the town to kind of figure out, you know, what happened there and. and, and the, the dollar amount of the difference. But like I said, the total of all the invoices was not, was not material for audit purposes, so therefore like the, you know, the dollar amount of difference wouldn't have been, but I don't know how, how much work was done with the center of fiscal 24, so. But that is, that is being reviewed and addressed.
Okay, Josh, Levine.
This, this just brings me to, our last meeting, we had an IT presentation. I wonder if there's some, I don't know our process like Mark was saying, but it seems like when you're putting in, if Chad's check, tracking contracts, if there's, I don't know if there's a program that can, when you're putting in those invoices, that you can make sure that they're matching up? Because it's impossible to look at this on a, I'm glad we have an outside auditor to look at it, but I, doing it on an ad hoc basis would be very difficult. And if there's some way that it can be done automatically, that seems like it would be good. I'm glad to hear it wasn't a material amount, but it could be. And a vendor that, or that we use all the time, so theoretically we could pay less for a bid until we're matched up or back where we should be. But if we have like a one-time vendor and something gets missed, that might be the end of it, it turns out once. So if there's some way technology can help us here, and now we're trying to get our ducks in a row IT-wise, I think it could be, something that could be addressed.
Yeah. And was there any mention of a change order? You know, because they, you know, they made the contract and then sometimes contractors will put in a little bid because they want to get the contract, and then they put in change orders to bring the, bring it up a little bit. And is that, did that show up? You're shaking your head, no? No, no change orders?
No, there is no change order. At least in what we were testing, there was no change order.
Yeah.
That we were, that we were made aware of, that, that did not come up in our conversation.
Yeah, because you would think that if any change in the contracted number, there'd have to be a change order in order to justify it.
Yeah. Yeah, typically what we see for change orders would be a change in the amount, like, so for instance, it was like, you know, wood that was chipped or something like that. It would be like, we originally thought it was going to be 12 trees and it was 18 trees, as opposed to like the dollar amount for wood chipping. Um, that usually doesn't change, it's usually there, so. Amount of work performed.
Okay, Mark Gold has.
Yeah, I'm just switching gears here a little bit, Tanya. I want to go back to my least favorite subject here, which is our net pension liability. Since you folks do audits of other communities and not just in what I'll call the Hampton County Regional Retirement System, how does that number as a, not just an absolute number, but kind of a relative number of changes compare to what you see in other communities?
Yeah, it's about on par for fiscal year 23. So the system itself, um, in the prior year was about 60% funded, which is reasonable. I mean, the city of Springfield's like 40% funded, that's on the extreme low side. You know, there's definitely some like 70, 80%, so it's kind of in the middle there. In fiscal year 23, it dropped down to 52% funded, the system in, in itself. But like I said, you know, looking at Hampton County, Hampshire County, you know, they all lost money, um, last fiscal year. So it, it wasn't, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's not uncommon. Um, and it's, we're gonna, it's gonna be a conversation I'll be having a lot this year presenting these financial statements, because everyone's net pension liability is going to be going up drastically because of the market value losses.
Yeah, just as, just as a comment, our pension charge for the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board is capped at a maximum of 8% increase per year by, I think by statute. And they have increased it 8% per year for the last three years and had projected it going out, going up 8% per year for at least the next three years. And I'm wondering if now this isn't going to extend that beyond that, that date. I mean, you know, this is not a town who can only increase our revenues by two and a half percent and everything else is capped at that, and we've got a significant cost going up 8% a year. And I say this because, um, to the rest of the select board, it may really be time for us to take another look at doing our own pension plan. And I say that because they're not doing well. If you look at the OPEB liability that we invested ourselves, you know, we've been doing better in OPEB through our own investments, which is different from pensions. And I know there'd be a, a cost, and I know there'd be a, a pain in doing that, but Hampton County Regional Retirement Board just hasn't been doing it for us lately. They've just going up 8% a year into the foreseeable future, and, and they're not making any progress. I mean, the only saving grace, the, before the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board being funded at give or take 50%, is, as Tanya said, is the city of Springfield. And I seem to recall they were somewhere in the 30%, maybe they're at the 40% now, as you said, Tanya. They've been, they've been really low. And what's interesting is there's some of the same people are on the boards of both of those pension plans. So just a, a quick, I mean, I, I just think there's a, a real problem with, because, you know, out, out of, out of, I think 62 or 65 pension plans in the state, Hampton County has been in the 40s, you know, city of Springfield's like 63 or 64, but, but, I mean, just been terrible and it's not getting any better. That's a, an art discussion for another day, but I think we need to have it. Otherwise, we're, it's just getting to be a larger and larger and larger percentage of our overall costs, and it's not getting any better.
Well, that'd be quite an extension of the audit committee or the auditors to, to look at the Ham Board, Hampton County Retirement Board and see how they're doing. But, um, you know, I know that there are some state, they, they, there's a state group that invests in a, so I don't think they have their, their own, like investors that are doing this. I mean, they put it into a pool.
The issue, Tom, and we won't get into too much of it, is they invest it in a PRIX, which is a state fund.
Right.
The state fund, in the past, and I don't have the new numbers, the state fund will say, we earned, you know, 12%.
Right.
And then the Hampton County Board comes in, well, we had our own expenses and after our expenses, our fund grew by 3% or 2%. That's the problem, whereas if you put it with the state and you manage it, you don't lose eight or 10% through management fees, and we have no control over that. That's my, my beef, if you will, with Hampton County. Not that the PRIX isn't earning money, they are, like you said. It's all in the same stock market we're all in, but it's, it's their internal costs that are killing us.
Right. And if, if that falls under the purview of our discussion, we'd like to hear more about it. You know, at some point, but, you know, we could put that on a future agenda, because it does, um, seem unfair that that fund isn't accumulating the way it possibly could, so. I don't know if you want to continue with your presentation, huh? You have a little more to cover?
No, that's fine. I'm just here to answer questions if you guys have any other questions.
Oh, okay. All right. Do we have any other questions?
I, I, same, I, I think you answered it, I think you answered this, but I ask this question every year, Tanya, I just want to hear you say, have you had a chance to speak with our audit committee without the presence of our management team?
Oh.
I did, yes. I had a very lengthy conversation with them after, um, after the presentation I did to the audit committee and the, the finance director, um, and had noted no issues during audit. But, you know, the town is wonderful to work with, it's a great team, they're very responsive, um, and that, you know, they provide us with everything we need in a timely fashion. We had no issues, no one, you know, gave us any, a hard time about, you know, anything requested or any of the testing we performed, so. That's, that's the conversation we had.
Okay.
Mr. Shone, you have anything else to add?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking. But I'll be brief. Uh, so I, I'll just go quickly through the process the audit committee went through. Uh, just to remind everyone, I'm the chair of the committee for this year. In June, we met with the folks at Markham just to discuss their audit plan, to make sure that they had everything they needed in a full set plan before we started the audit. Uh, they gave us a full report on that plan and it went well, as expected. Uh, and we met again in October in the middle of the, the actual work where they had staff coming out to meet with the folks at the town to make sure they're getting full access to the information they needed. And everything we were told at the time indicated that Markham was in fact getting the cooperation they needed, which not surprisingly has been the case for the last several years. Markham has been our auditor for years, although there used to be Melanson, however, it's the same staff doing the, the work on the ground. And I'm unsurprised to discover that the town was being cooperative as expected. We met last week to discuss the ACFR that's in front of you and the reporting and recommendations that we discussed. And as you heard from Tanya, she presented that, you know, beyond, the information that they reviewed up to their materiality threshold indicated no significant concerns on the basis of the town. There were some repeated issues that we discussed with the management letter, but in general, the audit appeared to be, by all accounts, showing that there were no significant issues with the town. And therefore, the committee reviewed it and recommended humanitatively to recommend it for adoption by the select board. So I wanted to report that that was a result of our meeting last week. To speak to a couple of issues, we do make a point every year of having a discussion with the folks at Markham. We kindly asked the folks at the town to take their leave of absence during that portion of the meeting, and we essentially have a direct conversation with the principals at Markham and anyone else who needs to from Markham to just make sure that there's no pressure, that they can answer these questions as candidly as possible and let us know that they got the access they needed to the information. Because the audit is only as good as the financial information that goes into it that's provided by the town. So we wanted to make sure that they had access that they needed and that there was no issues that might be a problem there in terms of providing all the information they got and everything we were told, just like in the years prior, was that Markham did in fact get the information they needed. And we appreciated the opportunity to have that candid conversation. I think you'll note that if you take a look at page 10, uh, at least on the page of the report I got last week, I don't know if it moved in the PDF, but you'll notice that the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the Government Finance Officers Association was awarded again for last year's audit, and I have every expectation that this audit will meet the same level of standards. So we are comfortable recommending to you that this audit was done professionally and well, and we believe it provides all the information you need that, that an audit should. I think I want to address one other thing that you brought up specifically, Mark, about the dispute over the contract and the billing rates. It may not meet the materiality threshold for the audit, and that's fine in terms of whether, you know, making sure that the audit doesn't show that as a particular issue, but the principle of the, of the thing matters as well. And when we discussed it in the audit committee meeting last week, it was my understanding that rather than any indication of impropriety, that the incorrect billing rate, a billing rate that was in the contract was applied to certain charges. So if that is an error and the contractor is willing to work with the town to remedy that, then I have few concerns over whether or not there is a, a larger issue of impropriety. If however, it turns out that there is a problem, we will naturally follow it and keep the select board apprised of something like that, because that would be novel and something I haven't seen in my time ever before, there is actually like improper billing on a contract like that. However, it is something we're paying attention to, and we discussed it at length last week and we'll continue to pay attention to it.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any further questions about how the committee proceeded?
Any other, Mark?
Yeah, it's, it's not so much for the committee, Matt, thank you for your comments. Ian, in the past, we used to get a quarterly audit action report. I don't know if you've even seen that, but it was a listing of all the things that the audits had indicated and what the status was. I'm just asking if we could get that, and, and we don't need it on a, you know, monthly basis, but some, just so we can follow up on, on these recommendations or, you know.
So like a quarterly audit corrections?
I think if you talk to Paul, I think he knows what I was talking about, and Matt, you probably do too.
Corrections, yeah.
It, it just helps us know that the town is tracking and generally what happens is where it says town comments, the comments are in there and then it's, it's kind of done and over with. But that helps us track progress against the audits.
Sure. So what, how, when would you like that? On a monthly basis or on a quarterly basis?
No, certainly not on a monthly basis. You, use your judgment, but the report is a, is a valuable report for, for the board. You know, you know, if it's every three months, every five months, every form, whatever it is, use, use your judgment, but.
I can speak at least to the current recommendations that Tanya and her team have given us. So I've written up my own comments, I've spoke with the department heads involved with the various findings, and I'll have a report to her going over what the town will be doing in terms of corrections.
Right. It may, it may make sense to have that as part of the quarterly treasures report, for example, just so it's all financial information.
Yeah.
Whatever. But I know it's been useful in the past. Thanks.
And, and immediately prior to this, I went through our process of last fall, how we go through overseeing the audit as it happens. What we do with the other half of the year and what we'll do in the spring is to review the recommendations from this year's audit and follow up on them. And that quarterly report you're referring to is the document the town has provided to us in the past to track those improvements that are necessary. And I imagine we'll continue to use something similar in format when we meet this spring to discuss the progress on addressing the issues in the audit.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Tanya.
All right. Thank you for, uh, your presentation on the audit report and, um, we'll move on. Great. Okay, so the next order of business for us is the select board comments. Are there any members of the board who have some, Josh?
Uh, just wanted to give a shout out to Lynn and Corinne, who, uh, were in Business West Magazine, and there's always an article every year about us. Uh, I think they're kind of public face of us, telling businesses, we're, we're ready, you want to come in and serve us? And I think you guys did a great job, so thank you for that. And, um, we had a middle school building committee meeting last week, and I just, I don't know, people may not be following that, uh, so I just thought if anybody's watching now, if they want to get a very, very general timeline of where we're at, we're currently picking a designer, and actually, we don't pick it, the middle school building authority picks it, but they, we'll get some input from the town. And Marty and Lynn will be a big part of that, and Nicole Schronier from the school committee. Um, and then next year, over the course of next year, we'll be picking, looking at different possibilities for how the school will look. A single school fix-up Williams or renovate Glenbrook. And then, once that's chosen, um, next fall by the MSBA, they, they make the choice. And then there's a year where that, there will be a project that will be all built out, you'll, all the diagrams, pictures, everything you could want for what that project will be. And then in theory, and this is if everything goes well, we'll be voting, fall 2025 will be when the big vote comes in and, um, when the town decides if they're going to spend all the money. So that's, that's a really, really general broad outline. Uh, if you look at our agendas, there's more, Collier's is doing a great job on making, giving us a lot of documents, but we got one last meeting showing kind of a really 30,000-foot view of the process. So if anyone's curious, 2025 is when we'll vote, 2028, I think, is when, the earliest we would be moving in. Uh, so my kids will miss it, but, you know, that's okay.
Okay. Any other slip moving comments? Yes?
Yeah, um, I just want to give a quick update on the municipal fiber task force. We had a meeting last week with Whip City Fiber, so we've kind of moved into the next phase of our process where we are now meeting with different providers. We kind of just wanted to start getting, you know, concrete proposals, start hearing numbers and getting an idea of what timelines would actually look like with these different providers. So we had a great meeting, two and a half hour meeting. Uh, they sent out five folks to meet with us, they gave a great presentation, provided us with numbers, timelines, all of that. Next month, we're going to be scheduling more meetings with providers. So we've already scheduled a meeting with GoNetSpeed and a meeting with Fiber Spring, which is basically kind of South Hadley's version of Whip City Fiber. And they've expanded to two towns outside of South Hadley, and they have expressed interest in, you know, meeting with us and, and talking about the possibility of expanding to Long Meadow. So we've scheduled those two, we're going to try to schedule as many more, a few more in January to hopefully get those meetings and presentations out of the way, so then we can kind of move into another phase come February where we are evaluating all the proposals and looking for, you know, any additional information from that point on. So, um, wanted to provide an update on that. And then the, uh, just wanted to quickly mention, you know, last week, we had the menorah lighting and geltrop on the town green. It was, you know, I think a beautiful ceremony, it had a great turnout, and, you know, I know, a lot of us were there. So I just wanted to thank Rabbi Kosovsky and L Y A and, you know, the Long Meadow Fire Department, Police Department for putting that together. That was, that was, it was really a wonderful night. And, um, and then of course, yesterday, one of the town's favorite events, we had the Santa run on the fire truck. And so, uh, always great. I think they did a great job with social media and everything, generated a lot of interest, and, you know, a lot of folks are standing out in the street. My kids loved it, so I want to thank the Long Meadow Fire Department and Santa and Mrs. Claus for partaking.
Good. Yeah, Mark Gold.
So, uh, this past week, I participated in a Zoom meeting by a group called Green Municipal Aggregation. And the, the name should clue you into what it is, but they, they're talking about, they're, they're, a group that supports municipal aggregation specifically to try to get people to look for more. to get people to look for more green energy in their municipal aggregation. But it was a very worthwhile Zoom. It's been recorded. I actually sent a copy of or a link to the recording to our Energy and Sustainability Committee. I thought that they should take a look at it and see what it is. I'll just leave you with one number and that is that the state required municipal aggregation for people at home don't know is the, is the town buying energy for its residents. So the town would aggregate the energy purchase for its residents and we've talked about potentially doing that. The state mandates, I think it's in the 11 or 12% of it be green energy. Obviously, this group is looking for above 15% and they love communities that are 50%, 60%. But what they quoted was that in the year 2022, the last full year, they had numbers for communities that had over 15% above the state mandated green energy. On average, they say, those residents save 3.3 cents per kilowatt hour, which is an annual savings of between $200 and $250 per household using municipal aggregation. And obviously, they love that people go above that, but then your savings kind of start dwindling or you start paying premiums for it. But the other thing they said is that there's still a significant backlog for, of approvals for municipal aggregation proposals that the, that the, you know, the Department of Energy, D E P. And I think that speaks to our need to get on this and get in the queue as soon as we can, only because it's clear there's, there's, there's savings available for our residents and it's not getting any, any quicker apparently based on what these people had, had not such great things to say about the Department of Environment, Department of Energy. So anyway, that was it.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay. So, well, as you can tell from the comments from the other select board members, there's a lot of very exciting things going on in town that the select board is involved with. And when I first was looking at the duties of the select board, on a scale from one to 10, I thought, well, maybe it's about a two or three, you know, and I've been convinced it's a lot more exciting. And I've really enjoyed the last eight and a half years that I've been on the board. And tonight, we're going to schedule the next election for board members. And I'm just letting people know that I am not planning to look for, seek another term. And some of you know, I do a lot of critical incident stress debriefing and that amount of work has gone up. You know, as some of you know, I was called up to Lewiston, Maine, and I've been, been called out of the state probably about four times a month. And so I, you know, it's just an important thing for me to do. I really enjoy it. Although I enjoy being on this board, I am going to not seek reelection. So hopefully, you know, we'll find some folks, someone to take my place. But if you do come on board, you know, you're, you're lucky because it's a great board. You know, we really have, you know, a great, some great discussions. We don't always agree, but that's not what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to all agree. We're supposed to bring our own opinions in and work it out through the democratic process. And it's been an exciting group and everyone gets along, which is a big change from when I first started. So, all right. Thank you. And we'll next move to.
Can we comment after that?
Oh, no, that's what I did at the end.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I feel like I have to say something. I, you know, want to thank you obviously for your service. You know, we were obviously, you're going to be on for a few more months here until June, but, you know, thank you for your eight years of service. I have appreciated, you know, your advice and your friendship and it's been a pleasure working with you. I think, you know, one of the things that I have respected the most about you, Tom, is the way that you treat other people. You've treated, you treat everyone else on the select board with great respect. Anyone that comes and sits, you know, at this microphone and speaks to us, no matter who they are, you always afford them, you know, great respect and make them feel welcome and that, you know, their opinions and thoughts matter. And that's really important, I think, in the way that we want to present ourselves to the town and also to encourage other people to get involved. And, and so that, that I think has been, you know, one of your best traits and something that I have learned from and, you know, I really admire about you. So thank you, you know, for, for your service here and, you know, hopefully, you know, you'll enjoy post-select board life.
I think I will. Those other folks have done it. And you don't want to put anyone else on the spot. We can move on with business, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. The next is the town manager's report and for December 18th.
Thank you. So I have some more grant news, which I'm pleased to share with you. The Long Meadow Police Department was awarded a grant in the amount of $37,279 through the 2023 Edward J. Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program. This is out of the Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research. This was an award to 130 law enforcement agencies statewide to address public safety needs. This grant applied for by Long Meadow Police Department was for the purchase of seven laptops for the police cruisers. These are the mobile data terminals. And as you may remember, these were actually funded at a special town meeting in November. We put that warrant article in because we did not know the status of the grant at the time and we knew that the grant announcement would be sometime after the town meeting, but before we actually moved ahead with the purchase. So I'm really pleased to say that we found out we received the grant and we will not be using the town's free cash money to purchase these, these laptops. So that is some savings to the town there. And a huge thank you to the police department for leading the way on this grant opportunity. It's things like this that if our departments continue to be aggressive and pursuing them, we can make our limited budget funds go much further. So that was all I had for my announcement tonight and I was happy that it was another good grant award.
That's good. We kept it just a good news. And this was stuff that we had just had at our last, you know, town meeting, special town meeting. And so that's good. Mark?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions, Lynn. I noticed in a couple of the monthly reports, particularly the DPWs, that A E Com is finalizing bid documents for two pool projects. And I think we had said at some point that we wouldn't be taking their original proposal, but rather modifying it. I was wondering if there's going to be some process of reviewing those to make sure that we met the agreements that we came to prior to the town meeting to make sure we adjusted the scope to save funds. I don't know how you want to do that.
Yes. Yep. I know that that's been something that DPW has been working with procurement on as they got ready to go out to bid for that work. So I will definitely follow up on that to just verify that that was in place.
Okay. My other sarcastic comment, which I have to have Tom, is that I noted that there's a, that we've gotten, finally gotten bids out for making the speed bump on Bliss Road, on William Street, compliant with state law, with state requirements. My sarcastic comment is, had we done it when we first knew it was out of compliance or thought it was out of compliance, we would have saved a whole lot of money, but we were told that, oh, don't worry, it's in compliance. But in fact, it's not in compliance. We're going to get it done and get it done right. And I thank Lynn and to the DPW for making that happen.
It's not long enough or not?
It's too short and too.
Yeah.
The grade is too steep.
Who told us it was okay?
The builders.
We, we, you may not recall, but there was actually a town meeting that there was a proposal to redo that. And our former town manager stood up at the town meeting and said, it's in compliance. I know it's in compliance. We're going to keep it the way it is. That was said multiple times and you can check the, check the tape as they say, but it was, it's not, I mean, we don't need to rehash that anymore than I already have, but, but it's, it's unfortunate because at the time, I think the cost was $45,000 to bring it in compliance and now it's $91,000.
Well, this is what we know. Over the time, the truth comes out. And Mark and I both voted to have that thing fixed years ago, but, you know, two to three, we lost. But well, good.
I kind of like launching off of this.
Well, it would be a fun place to land.
More than that's where the damage, the firing, the ambulance, the first time it went over.
The ambulance was the first one.
Took out the bottom of the ambulance. The other thing is, and I, I think we should notice this, I know there's people here from the recycling committee, but there was a report that, that Heart Springs, who does recycling of textiles, has collected 8,959 pounds of textiles in the last month. People may know that it's now illegal in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts to dump textiles in your trash. And so we encourage people to go, I think it's the first Saturday of every month, they're at the Long Meadow Shops and they take both good textiles and not so good textiles. But it, it's an astounding amount, 9,000 pounds of recycling. And I think it just speaks to our ability to do recycling. It's also 9,000 pounds that we kept out of our waste stream, which is a big deal for us.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So the next thing is old business. We need an approval for the minutes of November 20th, 2023.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2023 select board meeting with the, I think there was a couple of typos or something I sent to Mike for adjustment.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. The next thing is the.
Quick question.
Yes.
So obviously the minutes come up, obviously like every meeting. I'm just curious, do we, do we have to have typed minutes to approve them or do we have video? I mean, can we just, I'm just trying to think of a way to save Mike. I mean, Mike, how much time do you spend doing minutes? Like each week it's got to be.
It depends on the, on what type of minutes I'm doing. So if I'm going in depth conversations, then yes, it takes quite some time, but it's just the votes and just a brief synopsis. It doesn't take as much time. So it really just depends on the quality of those minutes.
This might be the difference in our generation standard, but I find immensely hopeful to have it written. And when I'm looking at other towns, I'm not going to watch a two hour video scrub through. I'd much rather pull up a document and hit control F. That's what I'm looking for. I mean, I know what you mean and Mike's time is valuable. He does a lot of other stuff, but I do think this is really important.
I mean, I think it's important to have a document. I'm just, if we, if we could come with like the bullet points of just like what we're talking about and we have, we have tape showing what the, what the person said or what we talked about. And I just think that is the actual like proof of what, I mean, you can watch the video and take everyone's words and that's what someone said. Or you look at the meeting minutes, it's, could be a little off. And I'm just, I'm just bringing it up just as a, just something that I've observed and the amount of time it might take for someone like Mike. But I'm not suggesting we have to change it, but I just figured we'd bring it up.
Yeah. Well, you'd think with the other technology now that you could have a written document and then just link into the video.
I'm actively looking into different processes that may make that more efficient.
Somebody just read this. Well, actually, I, I think I'd sent this to Lynn and maybe Mike. There's a company out there who's promoting obviously a product that takes the tape and transcribes from the tape and gives you almost a verbatim thing. But Dan, I think two things. One is, I think legally, the written minutes are a record that we have to keep. And the video, although good and useful, doesn't pass legal muster. But on top of that, the minutes we get that might, are far more detailed. If you go back even five years or six years than, than they used to be. I mean, it didn't capture, you know, conversation would say, conversation took place. You want to know what was said, but it's really a record of the votes and who voted, how they voted, and if there's substantial discussions. And I think that we could do, we could do with less verbiage in the, in the writing, which will then achieve what you're trying to do, but still give us a written record. I mean, Mike does a phenomenal job, but it's almost a verbatim set of minutes and that's not necessarily, I don't think it's required at all. I think it's a, a record of the votes. On the other hand, when things are contentious, we often go back and say, what did we say a year ago or two years ago? And so it's nice to have that. But if you have the, the video record, maybe we can use that.
Right. Of course, the other thing is our video record is going to be as stable as we'd like. I mean, you know, you look at, I was reading a book, Leonardo da Vinci, you know, he wrote with a paper, a pencil, 600, over 600 years ago, and they can read all his notes. So, I mean, there's something about hard copy that has proven itself over the test of time, you know?
Do we post our videos or is only YouTube posts?
Yeah. The town doesn't control the videos. That's the problem.
Well, I wonder if we have it here too. But yeah, I don't know, because I just.
I mean, like on Zoom record, we have Zoom recordings as well. If we're, if we're doing a hybrid format, prior to the hybrid format, I can't.
But Mike, but who's, who's the, the owner of the copy of the video? It's, it's L C TV. It's not the town.
Right, correct. So, you know, the legal, the legal record of what's said at these meetings is the written record. But again, it doesn't have to be a verbatim discussion. It can be a, you know, here's the motion. He was for it, he was against it, and here's the vote.
It is a good thought though. I heard recently about an AI, AI thing that will catch you up on Zoom meetings. Like it, that'll do the bullet points. I mean, I don't know how good it would be, but if it.
So we tried that. You didn't know, but we did try that one meeting ago.
Two meetings ago, yeah.
Just to try to streamline it a little bit. And it was more cleanup. I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, no, correct. It was just more clean. It ended up taking just the same amount of time to go through and make it more clean up. So to Dan's point before, we're, we're looking into some ways to kind of make it a little bit easier because there are other staff people that also write minutes and it may be beneficial to them in the long run besides just myself. So it may be, you know, a bigger thing that we could help out other people with also.
The reason why I thought about it was like, one time I walked into the office, I saw someone with like headphones on and like they're writing, they're typing and writing. I'm like, I'm just imagining what you're doing, you know, and just, just an idea.
It's definitely a worthwhile conversation and I appreciate you bringing it up. And now that I know you guys are all interested in that, we'll definitely keep pursuing it.
Yeah, the municipal fiber task force, the folks on there were horrified that this is how we did it. So they probably have some ideas. They have lots of stuff too.
They're nerds.
Sorry?
They're nerds.
The problem is, what we don't want is a, is a 12-page transcript of every.
Well, yeah, yeah. No, that's, no, definitely, definitely not.
You need something in between, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item of business is the Senior Veteran Tax Abatement Program. And there's an application update. We, we recently discussed this at one of our meetings and attached to our agenda today is a memo submitted by Jim Layden, the Director of Adult Services, dealing with the revision of the 2024 Real Estate Tax Abatement Program application. The updated directive is from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. The change we made will increase the abatement that we discussed to $2,000. Only applies to those participating in the senior program and the monetary change for the veterans hadn't, hadn't changed. So we have this memo from Jim and I don't know if, if Lynn, if you wanted to speak to this at all, it's.
Sure, happy to. The memo is pretty self-explanatory, but you had approved a program and at the time, we had you approve it with the veteran and the senior exemption being the same dollar amount of $2,000. But in digging into this a little bit more, we learned that the increase only applies to the senior participants and not the veteran participants. Whether that was an oversight or not on the state level, we're not sure yet. It's possible that they'll make a modification and we'll bring you back something later on. But as it stands right now, it's $1,500 for veterans and you can go up to 2,000 for seniors in the program. So you see the, the memo here explains this and we're just asking you to make that adjustment tonight.
Okay. And the, any comments or questions on this?
How will we adopt the revised Senior Veterans Tax Abatement Grant Plan?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. And the next is the Greenwood Center Municipal Office Consolidation Update. This was in front of our board on November 20th. We had a presentation by L L B Architects in addition to talk about the renovations and what our options are, referring to a facelift, all the way to a major facelift. I don't know if we're allowed to even talk about facelifts anymore, but, but we were, but the thing was. about facelifts anymore, but but we were, but the thing was, you know, we had looked at, you know, from painting to carpets to bathroom exchanges and everything. So after the discussion, it was referred to the Long Range Plan Steering Committee and the Permanent Building Committee. And so we also asked the town manager to review some different funding options. And so I guess we'll start with the town manager in terms of an update on this topic.
Great, thank you. So yes, the Long Range Plan Steering Committee and the Permanent Building Committee both reviewed this. Attached to your agenda is a letter from the Long Range Plan Steering Committee that hopefully you've had a chance to look at. Just for those people watching, the committee did briefly talk about this, but recognized that this was outside of the scope of what they were formed to look at, but did wanna take the opportunity to let the board know of some considerations that did relate to the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, such as greenhouse gas emission reduction and climate mitigation, social equity and accessibility, and preserving the town character. So that letter there is, again, linked on the agenda if you wanna read it. And then the Permanent Building Committee, while they did not have a formal quorum at their meeting, they did have a good conversation of those members that were present, and some members of the public that were present to hear the conversation. And they wrote a memo to you explaining where they kind of stand on this informally. And I do wanna note that the Chair of the Building Committee is here tonight, too, if you wanted to recognize her to speak to any of this as well. And then there is two memos attached to your agenda tonight about financing options, one with American Rescue Plan funding and one without American Rescue Plan funding. And we also have the Finance Director here tonight to speak on any of that. I'm happy to go into a little bit more detail on the Permanent Building Committee meeting, if you want. That was the one meeting I did attend. The Assistant Town Manager was at the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, and I believe Select Board Members Warko was there as well. I think you were at that meeting?
The Long Range Plan.
Long Range Plan, yeah.
Yeah, that was at the
And, right, and Select Board Member Gold was also at the Permanent Building Committee. So we we have some fairly good representation here to to debrief you on what happened there, if you want me to go into that detail.
Well, I guess the first, it would, it's helpful for the board is is to know, you know, 'cause it's a, it affects the talent in a pretty broad way, and and how much feedback we've gotten. I know we've gotten a few letters, but I don't know how much other members of the board have heard anything on this. And maybe we could start with that. I don't know. Well, Josh, and then Mark.
Go ahead, Mark. Get your hand up.
Thanks. I I have gotten some feedback, and the feedback is pretty much in line with the letters we got, which is, gee, wouldn't it be, it'd be a real shame not to have Town Hall in the middle of of the city, the town, you know, and, you know, I mean, I've I've heard it several times over. And and my my response to them and my response today is the same thing it was two weeks ago, which was, if you recall, I turned to Lynn and said, Lynn, are we doing this for for two years or for thirty years? And her response was thirty years. You know, if in fact, we're not going to Greenwood for thirty years, we're going to Greenwood as an interim solution, you know, I can understand why we wouldn't put more than ARPA money into Greenwood as an interim solution. Here's my fear, and frankly, I'm just gonna quote from the comments, the letter we got from this Permanent Building Committee said, residents wouldn't financially support options one or two, which is upgrading the Greenwood options, but they wanna renovate the community house for town offices. And I just don't understand that, frankly, because my fear is that we will spend ARPA money only at Greenwood Center. We will have what I'll call a bare minimum Town Hall facility. And thirty years from now, we'll still be there, because nobody's gonna wanna spend the kind of money it's gonna take to renovate, whether it's Town Hall or the Community House. We toured town, a few of us toured Town Hall and the Community House the other day. I think there's no doubt in anybody's mind that to make those suitable for town offices is real money. And by real money, I'm saying seven, if not eight, figures for certain, you know? And unlike the schools, where people say, you know, we don't wanna spend, pick a number, for building new middle schools, but we have kids, you know, third of the town, has kids who go there, and everybody says it improves the town, the value of my property in town. There aren't a whole lot of people who are gonna look at spending ten million or dollars, give or take, for town offices and say, yeah, that's something, a real asset for me, because I go in, most of the people in town don't even go into town offices, you know? And so I'm I'm fearful that we will do a bare bones, minimum process at Greenwood Center and never get the approval to renovate, whether it's Town Hall or Community House, and move things back, because we're gonna find out how expensive it is. Because we saw what the building looks like. We need an elevator. We need HVAC systems. We need to gut renovate those. But so, I hear what people say, and if everybody's saying, well, let's just spare, spend the bare minimum, yeah, we're gonna come back here, I challenge those same people, whether it's the Permanent Building Committee, or the folks who have called me and probably called all of us, like, we really want community, the town offices in the middle of town, to come up with the financing for it, 'cause it's not gonna be cheap, and it's gonna be on top of, pick a number, eighty million dollars for the schools, on top of twenty-four million dollars for the streets, on top of sixteen million dollars that we told about, told about for the water systems, on top of, you know, twelve million dollars, being told that we need to take care of trees. So if if people are on on board with it, let's go for it, because it's the right thing to do. Just awfully expensive, and I hope everybody's got the stomach and more importantly, the wallet to do it.
Okay. Josh?
I think I, I've been thinking about, a lot about this. I I think I got a little overawed by the pretty pictures last time. We were looking at that. We got very excited about it. But I have, I have heard from people, and Tommy brought me down to earth a little bit, and got me thinking about it. One, I think in the Long Range Committee letter, talked about the character of the town. And I think that that is something that's very important to our town, and it would be a shame to leave those two, especially the Community House, a beautiful building that needs a little work on the inside, empty in the middle of town. And that's, I, when we talked about this last time, I asked a lot, what are we gonna do with it? Because we gotta do something with it. And so that's one of my big concerns. So I don't wanna spend a lot of money at Greenwood and then have have to spend money at Community House to do something. If we're gonna do something, why not put a Town Hall in it? So I I kinda have circular thoughts on this. But then that also brings me another question. If we do spend this million dollars on Greenwood, what are we gonna do with it after? I'm just worried about us throwing good money somewhere that, just because we have it, which I, I know we kinda have to, under ARPA, under the guidelines. But I think on the whole, I sat next to our moderator the other day at a dinner, and she was mentioning that she does a lot of transit work, transit advocacy, and like, public transit, trains, and so on, a train run through Long Meadow anymore. But she said, if you plan for cars, cars will come. And if you plan for walking, people will walk. And Mark's right. People don't really generally interact with Town Hall that much. They don't walk there. But it is nice that they can. I know that there's people who can walk there from the Greenwood side of town, but I feel like it might be more, or just the walking center of our town, I think is really around Town Hall now, with the school, the church, and everything. So I don't know if I have an answer yet, but I I'm not of the idea of where I was before. And I'm, I am very, I need to know what kind of numbers we're working with. Or the other thing that I thought was very interesting in the, I think it was the Permanent Building Committee letter said, if you don't do a facelift outside, it just looks like a school. And you have to do a lot more, a lot more money that is not allocated to make that look like Town Hall. If we don't do it, it's never gonna look like Town Hall, just like it didn't look like a senior center, looked like an old school. So I I think to, for me to make a decision, I need to know what kind of money it would take to get, or what we would be looking at with Town Hall and the Community House, and what it would really take to get Greenwood up to snuff. But I am leaning towards just the facelift now. But I I do need more information.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely, I agree with a lot of what what Josh is saying, and certainly, you know, what Mark was saying a couple of weeks ago, just in terms of, you know, if we're gonna do something, we should do it right. The more that this issue, you know, lingers and and people reach out to you, and, you know, some of the things I you know, that have come to mind would really be almost like hedging our bets, if you will, because, you know, right now, you know, Josh talked about earlier, the Mass School Building Authority, we might have, we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen with the schools. There could be a consolidation. Maybe town offices actually end up as part of this, in the school buildings. We don't, we don't know that. Maybe Greenwood, long-term, could be senior housing. Like, these are all things that we don't know. So personally, the more that I think about it, we have, you know, over one point four in ARPA funds that it's it's not, you know, these aren't funds, these are funds that were given to the town of Long Meadow that we can leverage, and we have a year to do so. And I don't see other significant projects that are in front of us that we potentially could, you know, put those towards. But with so many unknowns right now, with where, you know, what buildings are gonna be used, for what, what, what kind of repairs are we gonna do at the Community House, Town Hall, I would, I would prefer that we use the the ARPA funds on on a facelift approach at Greenwood, shifting offices temporarily. And maybe it is long-term. I don't know, but I also don't, I I wanna have more input from the residents as well, and and have a better plan in place to make sure that we're making these other buildings ADA compliant. And if it means that we can then bring the offices back to the center of town, which I personally would prefer, that we had more of a central location like we do now. But we just can't, it's not feasible right now with with the workforce and the conditions of the building. So I would like to see us shift to Greenwood, whether it's temporary, using funds that aren't impacting the the taxpayers. And the only, the other question that I had was, from like a furniture perspective, how long would the furniture last at Greenwood? Could we, if we made the switch back to Town Hall or the Community House, could we use the furniture at those buildings? I don't know. Is it like a two-year lifespan? I don't, like, those are some of the questions I had. So, so I guess just in closing, I just think this is a broader discussion for the the townspeople, the taxpayers should weigh in with the school, sorry, with the Permanent Building Committee, with other committees in town, and really come up with a a plan that is a holistic approach across the whole town with our, with the use of our buildings and and, you know, what happens with our school. Is it gonna be one school? Could we move offices there? Maybe we use Greenwood for senior housing. So these, I just, I would hate for us to put a ton of money into Greenwood, and then we realize that, you know, we could actually move the offices back to the center of town, which, quite frankly, that's what I, a lot of people are reaching out to me with that concern. And I just think if we can use the funds that aren't impacting the taxpayers, I think we should kinda hedge our bets, and that that's my thought.
Denise, yeah?
Yeah, thank you. Well, first, I thank you, Tom, for, you know, coming up with the idea of reaching out to the Permanent Building Committee and the Long Range Planning Group. It was great to get their thoughts on this. You know, I thank Cheryl Thibodeau and the Long Range Planning Committee for their letter. I think revisiting those principles that are important and should, you know, be dictating, for for the most part, our decision-making was important. And also to Mary Beth Bergeron and the Planning, or Permanent Building Committee, too, for their, for their thoughts. So I I think that, like, like Mark said, and like we've been hearing, hearing from folks, thinking about it more, it's not a slam dunk that a full renovation for five million dollars for Town Hall would pass a town, town meeting. And and also, I mean, we have to, we have to reckon with the fact that we're gonna be asking the town for a lot of money for the middle school. And, you know, you can say, yeah, we should try to make the best decision at every single point, but the fact is that this is one big budget. This is all stuff that we're gonna be asking the town for. And so all, you know, everything affects everything else. And so that's, I think, the next big-ticket item that we should be asking the town for. And so I, I feel, I guess, more uncomfortable now, ask, going to the town and asking for money for this full renovation. And then, you know, the last week, just, you know, we had a timely facilities tour and of town buildings. And I think a couple of things that struck out to me on that tour, or stuck out to me on that tour, was that Greenwood is actually in much better shape than I thought it was. There are a lot of newer elements to Greenwood, you know, a newer roof, newer electrical system. And also, we already have other, you know, departments in there. We've got, you know, we run our daycare out of there. We've got Parks and Rec in there. So providing a facelift to whatever that is, forty percent of the building, that makes some sense, 'cause we were already operating out of there. And then the second thing that, you know, really stuck out to me was seeing all of the different facilities and seeing how many of the facilities were unused or underused, or were just structured in a way that didn't meet the needs of town government in the twenty-first century. It just made me think, too, about how we need to take a step back and approach this with a strategic, in a strategic way. We need to really look at all of our buildings and figure out how we can maybe consolidate, what we should maybe offloading, in fact. Because right now, if we're talking about things like sustainability and, you know, taxpayer money, I think we're, we have an outsized carbon footprint because of the number of buildings we're operating that are unused or underused. And also, we're costing taxpayers a lot of money in operating these buildings. And so instead of right now throwing five million dollars at Greenwood, we can, which we don't know if that will, you know, even pass a town meeting. We don't know how long that would take to complete. It makes sense to me to take ARPA money that we have available right now to us, get this facelift done, you know, move folks in by fall, and then maybe take a step back and have a bigger conversation where we're engaging the community, engaging stakeholders, and talking about how we want to use our buildings, you know, moving forward. And then this, the other big part of it, too, is with the middle school, if we do end up consolidating, that is also going to probably, like, you know, and Dan kind of talked about this, going to possibly free up a huge parcel of land in our town. And that also needs to be part of the conversation about, you know, what role will that play? How are we gonna use that, and what we can do with it? So I think this is a good time for us to to step back and maybe start that bigger conversation. So, yeah, so so for all those reasons, I would be, I think, I would be in favor of moving forward with a facelift for Greenwood using ARPA money.
Yeah. I I think I, I think we're all kinda on the same page, for the most part, about, you know, the the way a town should operate. You know, I mean, when I think about the center of town, the green, and I think, okay, this is where everyone gathered for the Revolutionary War. This is where everyone gathered for the Civil War, you know? And it's like, our history is on that green, you know? And that's where our Town Hall should be. You know, we've had five buildings, you know, you know, the Meeting House, Town Hall, the two middle schools, and Greenwood. And the sixth building would have been the DPW. And the town came through, and they said, yeah, those guys should not be under the trucks in the cold snow, you know, fixing things so they can get out and plow our roads for us, you know, that we should give them a decent building. And it wasn't an easy process. It took a lot of convincing. But I think that, you know, the town had to pay for that completely, you know? The schools, you know, we will get money from the state for the schools, you know, they will give us what they figure is fair. We will have some buildings that are open, and so we shouldn't make a premature decision for a permanent move, I think. That would be better done after, you know, as we move further down the road. And then, you know, you know, when I talked to Mary Beth Bergeron, and I said, well, you know, then, you know, you know, when I talked to Mary Beth Bergeron, and I said, well, you know, an elevator could be really expensive. She said, well, it could be like a half a million dollars for an elevator. I mean, it doesn't have to be something that is going to be, you know, totally out of reach for our community. And again, we may do it in phases, but the other side is, there may be people who will contribute to having a town hall that is wheelchair accessible. And just like we have an adult center that has a gymnasium on it that would not have been there if it wasn't for the contributions of, of members of, of our, well, people who lived in our community, did business, work in our community. There's a possibility that we could also get some help with this process because, you know, it does reflect on our whole town and, but, yeah, if we have the ARPA money, I think I would lean, lean in that direction, say, you know, let's get it moving. Let's see where things are at in a couple of years. Of course, you know, voting on this, we don't want to compete with the high school or with the middle school vote. And so my personal opinion would be, it'd be nice to get something in order, you know, like a plan in the next year or two, so people could vote on it prior to the middle school. That's true. That's what I think. Because it'll be, it may be harder later, but, you know, it, it was a long process to get a new DPW. And for those of us, you know, in this, in these seats, you know, we're going to hear about how much less expensive it is because trucks last longer, equipments last longer, you know, hopefully personnel will last longer because of the new DPW. And hopefully we'll have the same sort of rewards when we put our money into a good town hall. Yes?
Just, I, I, I think it makes sense for us to hear from Lynn's perspective as well. I mean, this is a project that Lynn's been spearheading for, since I got on the board, and probably two, three years now, right? So I'd be interested to hear, you know, your thoughts and opinions for this project.
Thank you. So a couple of things quickly. You asked a question about the furniture and whether it'd be usable in a different space. And answering that question also clarifies a question that was brought up at the last meeting that I think either I didn't understand the question or I answered it in a way I thought was answering it, but I'll clarify. So the furniture that we've specked out is a modular furniture that can be repositioned and refit in different ways. It can be added on to, it can be shortened out so that we could use it in multiple different setups. So yes, we could move it back to a different location. That furniture is expected to last 20 years. The, and then when I answered the question about the full renovation, a full renovation would be expected to last 30 to 50 years, whether we're in that space or not. The extent of the renovation would be a 30 to 50-year construction, not timeline, but the work product would be a 30 to 50-year lifespan. So not that we would necessarily be there for 30 to 50 years. I have also sat with this quite a while. It's been on the ARPA plan since the ARPA plan first came to you. We did do one feasibility study that was a very high level one, but that was the basis for doing this deeper feasibility study. And I have a lot of thoughts here. And what, the one I keep coming back to though is the renovation for $5 million is only about 40% of the building. So I have a really hard time justifying spending that kind of money. That would only give us about 40% aesthetic upgrade. It doesn't include outside, no parking lot. The park and rec and daycare wing would look entirely different. The only thing it would do in the entire building is a sprinkler system, which is important, but I, I don't want to lose sight of that. Given everything that you've all mentioned here and, and knowing what's coming down the road, the only one I, I see making sense at this point is the facelift, the, the money that, the, using the ARPA funding that we already have available. And right now, the estimates that we have, we're, we still have a few that we need to gather, but it, it's coming in at $605,000. So our goal is to not spend 1.4 million. Our goal is to spend the least amount possible so that we could use that money for something else, like a study of community house, town hall, old town hall. If we're looking at that campus, I would even suggest we look at the fire station and police station because everything is so tight right there. Why wouldn't we look at it all as one big campus? But I don't want to, I wouldn't want to halt progress in an area where we can make significant progress by improving the municipal offices, having greater ADA accessibility, more parking, more meeting space that we don't have now. I wouldn't want to delay that just because we don't know what the future looks like for those other facilities. Whether we do something or not with Greenwood, that we have to have a conversation about those other facilities. And I, I really like the timeline too. The, using the ARPA funding that we already have, we can get started right away. We can do a lot of the work over the winter. We could be in there. We're thinking late, late summer, early fall. Whereas the renovation project is a much greater timeline with a ton of uncertainty. We know what happens when you open up any wall at your house. It never goes as you think. And that is something that I've been really concerned with, with Greenwood. If we start really breaking down walls or expanding out areas, that it might be greater than what we thought. And I, I don't want to do that. So I'm sensitive to all of this and I'm really hopeful that we could do the facelift for a lot less money so that we could use that money to start on that study very quickly.
Yeah, just, when would we know how much money we've spent on the facelift? Because I know we have a, you know, deadline of next, you know, end of December to use the rest of that ARPA money. So just kind of how much time would we get maybe to see, you know, what we can use the rest of that money for?
I would expect we would have almost all of this under contract by May. It'll all be separate contracts. So we would know, we'd have a really good idea by then what we were looking at.
Okay. So like next summer, we could have a conversation about what to do with the next, with the, if we have remaining?
As soon as I could, because I don't, there's not any chance that I will want to lose any of that money.
Yeah.
This just goes poop, right?
It remains to be seen what they'll do, but we don't have any guarantees we'd be able to commit it after the end of '24.
And he gets shaking his head too, yeah.
That's what the rule is. By, by 12/31/24, 24, it has to be committed for projects.
We need, we need like an act of Congress to extend it?
Potentially.
It's federal money.
It is federal money.
That seems easy to get.
Get Richie Neal on it. So this is the second time we've discussed this idea. And so we could kick it down the road, we could take a motion.
I don't think we, I mean, we've already approved the ARPA plan. The ARPA plan has it. The, the vote was to change the, the proposal, right? I mean, do you want, you want the select board to come back and say, sure, go back to what we were doing? That's fine.
Okay.
Provide like a directive?
Just for clarity's sake, I move that we appropriate ARPA funds towards the renovation, or sorry, the facelift, facelift option of Greenwood School.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we now look at our 2024 common victular applications. And there's a motion to prove, oh, I need a motion to approve the, the five different sites?
I'll move we approve a 2024 common vic license for Alex's Bagel Shop, Big Y, Frankie's Pizza, Glen Meadow, and the latest craze.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. And new business, there's paint stewardship legislation that's come out. And attached to agenda is a letter written by the Recycling Commission Chair, Irwin Pierce, about presentation, the commission, listening to him, on pending legislation that would mandate recycling of unused paint within the Commonwealth. The commission voted unanimously at a recent meeting to recommend the select board to send a letter to support the legislation. And we sent it to Representative Brian Ash. And a draft of letters also attached to the agenda. Any comments on this suggesting that we write a letter of support for Mark?
Yeah, I sat in on the Recycling Committee's discussion on this. I think it's, it's clearly the right thing to do, just so people know. What would require people to recycle paint right now? I think the number Arlene said was, we probably know more, $500 a year or something like that, is, is our share of disposal of the paint?
Well, no, probably thousands of dollars.
Oh, is it? Okay. And we pick, when, when a Long Meadow resident wants to recycle paint, they take it to Westfield or wherever it is.
NEDT.
We, we pay money for it, but people don't realize that I learned that this is, you could actually take it to the Sherwin-Williams store in Enfield, Connecticut. They'll take it back for nothing, save the town money. But the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is trying to put in place the same thing so that paint stores in Massachusetts would also be required to, to take back used paint. It's a good idea. We ought to send the letter to endorse it.
Yeah. So it's sort of like they did with, when you changed the oil in your car, you could take it back to any gas station. And they, because people used to pour it in the drains of the sewers and stuff. So, did you have anything to add?
Well, just to say, this is part of a bigger picture, actually. It's, it's extended producer responsibility is what we're talking about, just like you do, did with oil, just as you're correct. And some states have done it with mattresses. And there are other, other, commodities that people pay, pay a little bit upfront and that helps manage the commodity. In this case, it's paint. And Massachusetts is way behind the curve in, in putting their foot in the water to support extensive, this, this kind of legislation. So this is an easy one. The paint people want it. The stores, it's voluntary. It's very inexpensive. It's not new. It's been out there for about 10 years all over the country. And so we've learned from other people and it's, and it saves the town money. It's convenient for residents. It's good for the, the business, the paint people that decide they want to participate, the stores that sell paint. It's voluntary. You don't have to do it.
Okay.
They want to do it because they get foot traffic and stuff like that. It's, it's good, it's a, it's a win-win, in our opinion. And you thought so too, Mark, from the presentation? Uh-oh.
Josh? I was wondering something like this. Who's against it?
Nobody.
It says, we are aware the opponents of this legislation contend that having a recycle fee charged when purchasing paint is a de facto tax.
And I don't know who they are.
Citizens Against Taxation.
Maybe, maybe the same people don't like to pay a deposit on their soda bottles.
And the reason this really hasn't, we're told by the presentation, the reason this really hasn't just happened is because you people know more than I do, the legislative document, the docket is huge. And to get one of these easier, less, you know, sexy bills to go forward is just, isn't happening. So they're just trying to get community support, legislative support, and they want, they want Brian's support. I guess these, Senator Olivera is already a, a signature to the, to the legislation. So, and Long Meadow has a reputation for being an environmentally sensitive and intelligent community. So I think it would be only appropriate that we step forward and support this as well.
Keep our reputation going.
Tom, I'll make a motion. We endorse the letter drafted by the Recycling Committee to send to Representative Ash.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Irwin sends his apology, but he had another engagement.
Okay. So we also have a Long Meadow Package Store request for a temporary extension of hours. This has happened in the past where they want to extend their hours around Christmas time. The request is open at 10:00 a.m. because they close an hour earlier than usual on that day, December 24th. So any discussion or any motions on letting them extend their office hours?
They normally close at 10?
I think they normally do close at 11. So I don't think it would be necessarily changing the closing time. It would just be opening an hour early.
Opening an hour early. But, oh, I thought you wanted to discuss that.
I may have misread the original application when it, or the, or the original letter when it came through. It's the same closing time, earlier opening time for the reasons that they indicated in their letter, which you do have the jurisdiction to, to do.
All right. And that is a Sunday, right?
Yeah, they can't open before 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the extension of open hours for the Long Meadow Package Shop.
Second.
Okay. No further discussion? All, all those in favor? All right. And then we have a one-day liquor license application from the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund. And it is, they applied for two one-day liquor licenses, applications for events beheld on January 4th and January 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And there's their motion to approve this application.
And those also should say 2024. That was in a 2024.
Oh, 24, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll move we approve the one-day liquor license applications for LACCF for January 4th, '24 and January 25th, '24.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. And opposed. I'm sorry, yeah. And then the police chief contract agreement. We didn't save this to the end because we're upset about it. So we need to vote on a successor contract for, this term they use for police chief stocks. So this would be an additional three years on his contract from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. Lynn, was there anything you'd want to say about the contract?
Sure. Sure. It is, it's primarily just a successor contract. There's some changes in the term of wages. We cleaned up a lot of language from the pre-existing contract and made some changes to an advance retirement notice, recognizing the accreditation process by adding a stipend. And there's some educational incentives in there for those licenses and certifications that Chief Stocks currently carries. But all in all, it's a fairly basic contract from the one we already had in place.
Okay. And this is a contract we discussed in executive session just prior to our open session. And I don't know if anyone has any other comments or if we just take a motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make as a comment. I think that I'd like to, Lynn, to take under advisement the consideration of moving either, either all or some key department heads outside of the, you know, the, the normal pay grade system, as we talked about.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be for this contract, obviously.
All right. Okay. Yes?
I just want to make a comment. On Chief Stocks, I just, I think we all probably feel the same way. I think he's done a great job, you know, being the chief of police in Long Meadow and, you know, unfortunate events that have happened that we all know about just recently, as well as, you know, over the summer. Him and his entire force have, you know, done a great job under his leadership and really excited to know that he's going to be with, with us for at least another three years, hopefully longer. So can't thank him enough and the work that he does for our town. So thank you.
Well said, Dan.
Right. And even for those of you that don't realize it, when we were going through the accreditation process, he did a lot of work for that with the previous chief. So do we have a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make a motion. We accept the contract extension from Chief Robert Stocks as police chief in Long Meadow.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Great. And next is the, we need to set the date for the annual town election and the location. And so is there a motion to set the annual town election date for June 11th to be held at the Long Meadow Community House?
Sumoed.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. There are some correspondence. I don't know if anyone has any comments related to?
I can jump in on one.
Yeah.
So the, the comment on the concerned tree. So I, I spoke with the homeowner, because I, I personally know the homeowner. And he informed me that the tree is coming down like in the next week or so.
Okay.
And then, well, I guess I don't want to speak any further forward of them, but he just wanted to let everybody know that it's going to be taken care of, so.
Great. Good. All right. Yes?
Yeah. I guess a couple of other correspondences that we may want to talk about. The dog nuisance waiver request from the Templetons. They've asked a request in the way that the entryway is closed in. And so, you know, I, they've detailed the other ways that they have met what we
And so, you know, I, they've detailed the other ways that they have met what we required of them, and then they've asked for a waiver for, for that portion. And I don't know if there's any, anything in the statute or anything to allow us to actually give that waiver, but I also don't know if there's any way to actually enforce it. But I don't know if it's just mainly just us, maybe just in this public setting telling them that, you know, that we accept it or don't accept it, or, you know, want some other, you know, modification to it. Personally, I feel like if our animal control officer, Marty Lee's looking at it, and she finds it acceptable, that's, that's good for me, especially since they have met all the other, you know, requirements that we've asked of them.
Okay, and I don't know if other people would consider a motion to, to turn this over to her, because we've already sort of voted what our stance was.
I just, I feel uncomfortable. Last time we talked about this, we had a, a dog hearing lawyer here. I just want to, I don't know if we should do it without it being on the agenda.
Yeah. So, I think we should put it on the agenda. Yeah, to that point, just for a little background, this came in on Thursday morning, a letter, and Marty Lee had sent over all of the supporting documents, so like receipt for dog trainings, everything else like that. So, we have proof and evidence of all of that, that, that directly reflects the memo that, that you got. And my suggestion would be to add it to a future agenda.
Because I'd like to hear from Marty Lee, just, if this, if it all checks out, I'm happy to do it. I think that that's fair. I just wish we'd do it right, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I didn't know what was the correct way to do it, so if, yeah, if we want to loop.
None of us do.
Well, sorry. Yeah, we had them. Yeah, 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 let's loop them in, and that sounds good in terms of that. And then the other one was the compliance checks that the police ran for the different establishments in town. Two establishments failed, and I don't know if that's also something we should put on a future agenda.
Yep, so that, we're in the process of working on scheduling the hearing. The only reason why it didn't make it to this meeting was because it didn't meet the, the deadline threshold for when we received it to when we needed to put the notice out. So, it just was kind of in a weird limbo situation between when we received the notice to this meeting. So, we're working on with LPD and sending out letters to those businesses to, to get the hearing scheduled.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's too bad, because we usually deal with non-compliance. And of course, you know, if you, if we were to sanction them during the period, be now in New Year's, it would be a lot different than sanctioning in January when people aren't spending as much time consuming alcohol. But I guess the only other thing would be if we had like an emergency meeting to look at if we wanted to have any.
They might have noticed.
Yes. Yes, that, that's why this, while this happened in November, we, the report wasn't received in the office until this, after the fifth, yeah, after your, a meeting on the fourth, we didn't get it until the fifth. We give two weeks' notice, it gets sent certified mail, there just isn't enough time to get it on this agenda. And even scheduling a special meeting won't, won't really give you enough time either.
There's also delays in mail, and I could not guarantee that I would get to them by the date that was needed.
All right, well, I guess they got lucky. Yeah. If there would be a sanction, we don't know that, you know, at this point. But, all right. Any other comments on the correspondence? Okay, so, our next select board meeting is Tuesday, January second. And in discussing with the town manager, we're not quite sure if we're, how much information we're going to have for that meeting, and so, we could move that our next meeting is January sixteenth. I don't know what people's availability is like on the second, or if they have a preference.
What is, what's like prefer we don't meet on the second?
It'll be at the town, right?
Yeah.
Didn't we talk about, I know, we, we talked about having something, but we put it on the sixteenth anyway.
The dog, dog hearing.
Dog on the sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm fine with having our next meeting on the sixteenth.
So am I.
I mean, if, you know, if we're going to get together on the second, it's not going to be a whole agenda anymore.
The problem would be, I mean, the, the prepare for a meeting on the second requires work on the thirtieth, thirty-first, you know, it just, that's, that's the problem. It's not going to happen.
Right, preparation. So, now, if something, if something came up, I'm sure Lynn would let us know, like, we have their meeting, but if, right now, our tentative plan could be on the sixteenth, is that sound?
You could do it tonight, if you really found something necessary.
Sixteenth sounds, sounds great.
So, yeah, right, we could always do it.
It's our holiday break.
Another day too, that, so, in case we feel like we don't have our quota of January meetings.
Yeah, yeah. I know how to reach you all. If we need a meeting, we'll get one scheduled.
She knows where to find us. Okay, so, with that, discussed? All right, second? All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you for watching. Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy New Year.
And happy New Year. Bye now.